So we're all set, okay. So welcome, we, we welcome the Zoom participants, welcome the people in the audience. We have a fairly short agenda today. We have, we're going to start with public comment. Then we're going to have a public hearing for some proposed zoning ordinance amendments. And then we have a couple of housekeeping duties at the end. So we'll start with public comments, this time is open to anybody who would like to address the planning board about any issues in the city. Issues that are not on the agenda today, if you're here for the zoning ordinances, you might want to wait for those comments till then. But anything else, please feel free to come to the podium. And we'll ask for your name and address just for the record.
Hi, Nancy Smith, Chapel Street. First, I'd like to thank the board for pulling back on a rezone of the entire metrics block last fall, as well as Director Mish and the City Council for their strong support of keeping the PV rezone to the metrics parcels at 31 Chapel Street. All agreed, there was no reason to rezone the block. The house on 33 Chapel was saved and we are grateful. However, on the agenda tonight is part one of unnecessarily creating a reason to expand the PD District to 33. I'm asking the Board and Director Mish to again step up to protect our lower and middle income neighborhood by rejecting the 3133 Chapel A and R land swap. The bike shed on 31 can easily be moved to a much better location on its lot. The bottom of 33's unpaved driveway can be moved a sliver away from 31, the garage is way bigger than the house and that swing can be made. So why a land swap that makes a small sliver of 33 PV? It's a ploy for expanding the PV District to 33 while only a small percent of the parcel keeping 33, well, only a small percent of the parcel, uh, well, it is only, sorry, a small percent of the parcel keeping 33 in the URB District and zoned URB. Part two is coming up on March 23rd via 31 Chapel Site Plan and Special Permit. Page seven of 31 Chapel's 22-unit site plan adds the nearly completed separate 33 Chapel refurbished house to its project site. And then details the intent to expand Planned Village District to the entire project site, which then includes the house at 33 Chapel. PV zoning was created for major projects like redeveloping the old state hospital property. PV used on an existing residential neighborhood will paint a big red profit bullseye on our lower and middle income homes and rentals for builders to exploit. Zero parking, for example, is okay in PV, which allows builders far greater freedom to tear down affordable homes and rentals and build whatever they want with very little oversight or limitation. Home prices and rents skyrocket. This is the housing crisis. A bit down the road in the home at 35 Chapel sells, the profit bullseye will make the refurbished home at 33 valuable enough for a builder to make the brand new owner an offer he can't refuse. Then there is a reason to rezone PV for a major project knocking down two small, single-family homes that young people might have had a shot at, but a builder can and will outbid them. This opens the affordable four family behind 35 for a rezone and massively profitable tear down, tear down, leaving renters out in the cold. This is the housing crisis. I'm asking Director Mish and the Board to once again protect the owners and renters of our lower and middle income neighborhood by rejecting the 3133 A and R tonight and by rejecting 31 Chapel Site Plan and Special Permit on March 23rd if the addition of 33 Chapel and the attempt to expand the Planned Village District are not removed. If you do, some young people may have a prayer of owning a home or renting there someday. We don't want to slow down the 31 Chapel project, we want it as soon as possible. We object only to the PV District expansion. Thank you, and I just want to mention RLLs can be exploited as well. A boarded aboard a McMansion in place of a fixer-upper home is, is the housing crisis as well. So thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, I'm Jackie Ballas from Florence, 35 Warner Street. I can remember where I live. I gave you the handout for reference here. I want to start with a quick review of the Planning Board meeting from September the 10th, 8th rather of last year. For the benefit of Chairman Kohat, who was absent from that meeting, did you take a vacation? Uh huh. Although Nancy Smith came to chambers to speak for her neighborhood at that meeting, her voice was essentially ignored. When I read the minutes of that meeting, it merely says that she read a prepared statement, it says nothing about the content of her statement. And the video of that meeting was not saved, so there's no way we can ever know what she said. Because of the acoustics, I didn't hear what she said and I was watching on Zoom. I saw the board members look at the map of the parcel. And one of the board members who's absent tonight said, well, why can't we put the PV line down here on Laurel Street? Because that would make a nice straight line on the map and it would be much easier to draw. And Director Mish said, well, we can't change the proposal at this time, but we can fix it the next time. I was disappointed that absolutely no consideration was voiced with a living, breathing, working, taxpaying residents of this neighborhood who would be directly impacted psychologically and financially by the expansion of PV down to Laurel Street. No care was shown for existing residents whatsoever. And that's why the discussion at the City Council meeting in October was focused on drawing the PV line strictly between Parcels 31 and 33 Chapel Street. And there were reassurances that PV zoning would not extend beyond the old metrics lot where I used to take my Austin Marina back in the seventies. Yeah, so you've got the assessors map there, you've, you've got the site plan there. The neighborhood, you can see the swap in the little red circles and how the boundary line jogs first into 33 and then back over into 31, swapping between URB and PV zones. The so-called swap of the parcels is very disturbing. The builder has told the neighbors in person, just last week, that he's fine with adjusting the placement of his bicycle storage unit, which is the top one, and the driveway, which is the bottom swap. It's not built yet, so everything is still flexible on the picture. He's, he, this isn't his idea, I, we don't know where it came from. But it looks like a betrayal of an agreement that neighbors and councilors made in good faith back in October. It looks like the planning board is making a gesture to the neighborhood that says, y'all can do whatever you want. You'll eventually get the PV all the way to Laurel Street, whether the neighbors like it or not. That's what it looks like, I'm saying. That's not what it is, that's what it looks like, please prove me wrong.
Thank you very much. Right, are there any other comments? So because we, with the folks in Zoom, if you have a comment, you can certainly use the chat function to notify either the Chair or myself, and we'll read your comments out loud. Raise your hand using the toolbar to bottom or? Only chat, okay, raise your hand to say you sent a chat. No chats?
No chat.
Okay, all right. Well, at this point then, we'll, we'll move on to our first item of business, which is proposed zoning ordinance amendments. And so we have a package, quite a, quite a few of them. And I think, if I remember correctly, what we do with these zoning amendments is, at the end of our discussion, we decide to kind of recommend, we make a recommendation, we don't really vote on the amendments, but we make a recommendation to the City Council, is that correct?
Right, so the, um, all zoning ordinances come to the Planning Board for a Public Hearing and Legislative Matters, which is a Subcommittee of City Council. And each of those bodies makes a recommendation to the full City Council. And then full City Council confers and deliberates about the recommendations before making a decision. So this is the first step for both of these packages. And the Legislative Matters Hearing for Item One, which we'll go over first, is, is going to be on Monday. And so then that package, if legislative, if you all and Legislative Matters both make recommendations between now and the end of Monday, that will go back to City Council next week. The other one will be, won't go to Legislative Matters till the April meeting. The first is, so I can go over the first, the big package, which is all about sort of tweaks and modifications to the form-based code that was adopted last spring. We knew that there would probably be these little things that popped up that we didn't catch or think about. And right away, we saw them, and so we sort of sat on them and waited because we figured there'd be some more that might come to light. And so, and I also want to thank Counselor Jarrett for running through the code afterwards and saying, oh, what about this, what about that? So a lot of the items in this package are, because he found these items that need to be clarified. The, um, there are several items in that package that went to City Council that are non-zoning amendments. So we're not going to talk about those today because Planning Board only has jurisdiction over the zoning items. I mean, you can't, we can talk about them, but you don't need to make a recommendation on them because they're not zoning. So the three, the items that are zoning, I've placed on the agenda. The rest of them that still, I think, was in your packet, but they're the ones that are non-zoning items. So the first one is Chapter 350, Section 7.9. And it's about where sandwich board signs are allowed. Let me just pop this up. Here, okay. And it just, the section, um, we missed it when we were going through. So it has old references to Central Business District and the General Florence Center or General Business District. So it just inserts the new map identification. So Central Business Core, Side Street and Gateway, and then Florence Village Center and General District. So that's that one. Do you want me to run through all of these before you discuss, or do you want to discuss each one?
Um, sure, sure, we can run through them. I think they're all pretty standard, you know, a lot of Florence Village Center.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, A1 is the parking section. And the Gateway District for parking, we just didn't identify the parking requirements in that district. And then again, sort of creating clarification about references about Central Business District where there are no parking requirements for the Core and Side Street District. And then moving into the, um, more of the coding part. This next section deals with the code section itself, form-based code. And this is to insert a, a, an allowed use that includes marijuana cultivation, production, sort of at a small scale, less than 5,000 square feet of cumulative square footage of growing area. No portion of such use shall be, shall front on a public way. Uses may only occur at the back of a building or in a building behind another building. And then all such spaces for production, manufacturing must incorporate high efficiency particulate air, air handlers with activated carbon filters and exhaust systems designed with vents that force the air at least 10 feet above the roofline of the building. Alternative technology may be used upon a finding by the Planning Board through site plan approval that such technology will, to the extent practicable, limit odors from marijuana in any place where the public or clients are present. So, um, the rationale behind this, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, so I thought we, as a planning board, discussed these kind of definitions before, we're talking about marijuana, but now we're just adding, inserting them into the tables for clarity.
So, so, um, what happened, so yes, part two, part A. However, and so the sort of going backwards, the rationale about separating where marijuana cultivation could happen and where sales of marijuana could happen was based on presumption that most production and cultivation is going to be large-scale plus required to be in buildings that are mostly walled up, no windows, because they want to control air, light, ventilation, and all of that in a controlled facility. And so it was deemed at the time, going back four years, that it would be appropriate to allow those in the industrial districts and at the Planned Village District because their industrial uses are allowed. And then sales where people are, it's retail, really, you want that in your commercial districts. So all of that's been identified, sort of separated in the code. There's sort of this newer provision at the state level, the CCC, Canvas Control Commission, has this, um, micro enterprise category that includes all of it in one. So cultivation and packaging and potentially sales or delivery. But it's a, it's, the focus of it is for very small you entrepreneurs and their special categories of entrepreneurs. So we looked at that and because it's small scale, and then even within that piece, if you get a license under that level, you, your actual cultivation area is even smaller than 5,000 square feet because you also have to have room to process and package and have an office and all of that stuff. So we felt like in certain circumstances, it might make sense because if it also includes a retail component, you want that in the commercial districts. So nowhere had we addressed this particular sort of category in the zoning. And so we felt like maybe in some instances, cultivation would be okay in the commercial core of Florence and downtown. And so that's why these caveats are there. So back of a building where window and street front visibility is not necessary. You know, we, it's similar to allowing, how we started allowing residential on the first floor if it were in the back because we wanted to maintain sort of storefront windows for pedestrian and, and public-private interface along the street front and, you know, energize pedestrian activity. So this is sort of follows along that same line to allow these in the back. The footnote is the same language we use in the industrial districts for production, and that's to address the smell that comes off of that. So this language is already in the zoning, we just want to make sure we're copying it into these districts. So that's the reason for this amendment. And it would, it would be allowed in, in all the form-based code districts with this sort of narrow definition.
Thank you.
The last one, again, is sort of a cleanup. Mobile food vehicles are, aren't allowed in the Central Business District. And it previously said Florence zoned general business, and so some of that's not Zone GB anymore. We want to change the text there to reflect that the concept hasn't changed. We don't want them in down, in Florence Village Center or downtown. Unless it's on private property, they can't be on public streets, that's what this is about. And, um, oh, this is, that's it for the zoning, the rest of them, I'd be happy to walk through, but they're in other parts of the code that are non-zoning. And again, it's mostly just adding the new zoning classification labels where they didn't exist before.
It's one, two, three, four, and zoning.
Oh, no.
I was just going to ask, I don't see the fourth one on the agenda.
It's three. The food truck one is not, and I apologize.
Okay.
Just three.
Because I wanted to open up that whole can of worms about food.
You can go on Monday. To Legislative Matters.
Can I do that? Okay.
May I just ask about the off-street parking one? So it seems like the categories are in central business, CBC and CBS, one space per. And then the next thing says, all districts, including CBG, one space per. So shouldn't it, so, does that mean also CBC and CBS? Because it says all districts, including CBG?
No, the, the way it's supposed to read is there are two categories. Either you're in central business core or central business side street, or you're in all other districts, but that also.
Right, it doesn't say all other districts, it says all districts. So maybe I'm proposing that it say all other districts.
Oh, they keep other in there, got it. Thank you.
I would insert other in between the words all and districts, maybe. All other districts, including CBG.
Okay, that makes sense.
That's, that's my only note on any of these.
Yep. Good catch.
So, and I guess I might say, is this an opportunity for us to discuss kind of the minimal, minimum parking that we have in zoning? And?
Um, in the central business, we never, we did not have parking requirements. So it carries over to the new form-based code and includes the side street district, which previously was also mostly central business anyway. The Gateway District and Florence Center used to be the general business zone. And in general business, you didn't have to have parking if you added a second story to a building that was one story. Or for the reuse of, of a space, you didn't have to recalculate. But if you added footprint, square footage, then just for that footprint, you would be required to provide parking. And we did not open up the conversation about that during the form-based code because there were so many other aspects of the form-based code that were changing. And over the years, there's been concern about Florence having or wanting to have different parking provisions than downtown Northampton. So sort of to George's point, George's point, yours, certainly we can, it, it might be a good time to have the conversation. I think it may be, this might be a time where you flag it and say, let's come back to that. You can't, it's not advertised as making a change to the parking requirements now, the table. So you couldn't make the change through this advertised amendment, but we could come back. And I think frankly, it makes more sense to have just a focused conversation about what we want to do with parking throughout the city. Yeah.
That makes sense. So consider a flag then. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. And if I haven't interested in broadening some of the flexibility around food trucks, I need to go to the Legislative Matters Committee, because that's not within our purview. Okay. So then we're looking at three zoning, three, three, three zoning amendments.
Yeah.
Okay. I might just ask on the marijuana one, when we're adding that new language, marijuana production of small scale, less than 5,000. Does this always trigger a special permit or site plan review?
No, it's allowed by right. Unless, of course, you're building a new building that's over 2,000 square feet, and then that would be site plan. Or if the applicant wanted to come to the board with an alternative means of addressing odor, then that would trigger site plan and they'd have to come before you and show you that what they're proposing accomplishes equal or better than what the standard is.
But if they're in an existing footprint, they're reusing that space.
Right, it would just be by right.
By right.
Yeah.
Does the odor only apply to indoors or outside?
Indoors. The only allowance for outdoor growing.
No, I meant like if they're venting outside, I guess it's going through filtration system, so.
Yeah, so, no, no, I'm sorry, it's preventing the indoor odors to outside.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what.
I'm just wondering if odors will be, you know, found outside, but I guess that's something.
That's what we're trying to prevent with this.
Right, that's why this is attempting to sort of address that based on what we understand for, you know, what can, how it can filter those air.
Yeah, and who enforces that?
Well, so when they come for the building permit, they need to show their system.
Yeah.
And so then that becomes part of their building.
And their inspection.
Am I wrong? I don't think we have a marijuana production site in Northampton at this point. We permitted one up in.
We have extractions and, and actually, there's one under development in the Yankee Machine.
All right.
At the back.
So we have, we have no data yet about odor, so this carbons, the carbon treatment, maybe other cities too, but we don't yet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I've heard about a good site landing. But I think about security lights and stuff.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. We did permit that large one up in the old quarry area, but that just hasn't come through up by Fred's variety store, yep.
Yeah.
Okay, um, other questions about either one, two, or three? So we could.
Carolyn, can you, I have a question, could you just repeat again the, um, the language about the venting? You said it was borrowed from, um, other parts of the zoning where this is allowed, which was industrial and where else, general business?
No, office industrial, general industrial, and the Planned Village District is where, is currently the only place where you can do marijuana manufacturing, production, cultivation.
Okay. I guess my only question about the 10 feet, putting this in, uh, possibly in central business and with the uh, change that I think form-based code brought along, that there could, as you said, be housing in the back, and then you end up with these different sized buildings that 10 feet above one building could be below the window of someone else, which is not something that you would encounter in an industrial zone. So, um, anyway, I don't, I, I understand the consistency of carrying over the identical language, but I wonder if this might actually potentially have more impact in these kind of mixed-use neighborhoods.
Um, yeah, we don't have data here for sure. I'm just going to pull up that language again.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
Right, an alternative would just say that it had 10 feet higher than the roofline of, and adjoining.
Yeah, which, that probably doesn't.
Then I don't. Yeah.
That they go higher. This is how it should be. It's not like some random fossil fuel. Like this is.
Interesting, I don't know, nobody's. Yeah.
It's really the outcome of that.
Yeah. Never know what you'll run into when you're doing research for zoning ordinances.
Yeah. So I guess a butters could ask for the, uh, the, the stack to be monitored in some way. I'm not sure how, I know Chark Pack for a while had a big problem up in Leeds with very noxious fumes, and they were able to monitor it to kind of get them to do a, a more sophisticated scrubber system. And I guess that would be up to the building inspector then to work with the butter or the, to kind of.
Isn't that a danger that was just having, it's potentially a nuisance, but it's not worse than mine if you have, like, it would be a kitchen dryer.
And it, it makes Northampton like Burgerville, yeah. Okay. Thanks, Jenna, other questions? Thanks, Jenna. Other questions? Well, like, um. So is there a motion about uh, to recommend these forward to?
See if there's any public comment. I don't see anybody.
Oh, that's right. It's a public hearing. Yep. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment on the zoning amendments? Or anyone in Zoom who would like to?
I don't see any chance.
Okay. Very good. Is there a motion then to close the public hearing? I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Thanks. The motions remain seconded. Any discussing? All right, all those in favor of closing the public hearing? Any opposed? Okay, unanimous. So we had a chance to ask our, our resident expert zoning expert all of our questions. Okay, good. And these are gonna be forwarded on to legislative matters this meeting on Monday and then, no, not the. Yeah, legislative matters and then on to the city council. So is there a motion to uh, recommend these three? Changes, these three amendments.
I'll um, move to recommend these three proposed zoning ordinance amendments.
With the, with that one change with the all other districts.
Parking. Yes. With that one change.
Which was number two.
Yeah.
Clarify parking performance. Okay. Yep. And all of these adopted changes are related to the form-based code. Our new form-based code.
My second.
All right, motions remain seconded. Any discussion? Okay, um, all those in favor? Any opposed? All right. Unanimous. Good luck legislative matters with your public hearing. Initially, we talked about doing one of these combined hearings, you know, so everybody could do it all.
Person.
It didn't work out.
But that was the problem. We still the only one.
Um, well, when central business meets, they're in person. Um, I think the, I think there are a couple other committees that are, and some of the. And the city council has been talking about bringing back the council meetings um, in. This month. Oh, they're gonna vote on it this month. Yeah.
We are the pioneer, so in many ways. All right. Um, great. So we have. There's another, do we want to discuss the second? One about this uh, uh, three, the attachment.
That's on the public hearing as well.
Okay. So the next item is three fifty attachment to uh, I'll let you underst- help explain that.
So amendment for the URB and the URC tables um, under the category of uses by right to those tables. Um, so it just adds, um, so we have an allowance by right is reduced lot line uh, for single. The proposal is to say reduce lot line for single or two families, so long as the two units are under a single roof structure. Um, the, the rationale behind this proposed amendment is that. Two, three, two and a half years ago. When, and then going back twenty years, um, when we had zero lot line for single family homes. Uh, the definition of single family home also included. Uh, accessory dwelling. So if you wanted to build an accessory dwelling as part of your single family home, by zoning, we still looked at it as. A single family home, even though there were two units. So two years ago, we um. Modified the accessory dwellings um, section and just um, created a two-family standard so that everywhere in the city, two family. Two families were allowed. And. Um, are. Around that same time, we also amended zero lot line and changed it to reduce lot line. There were uh, several changes that were. Um, that were put forward to city council based on comments from the neighborhoods and, and concern about the way the old zero lot line. Uh, was laid out. So those modifications were put forward to address those concerns. But it inadvertently left out the allowance for a second unit. You you know, within the same roof structure essentially as what had previously been allowed. And so that's what this, this is all this is doing, but to I, to specify that it's, you still have to be on one roof, so it's not like you can. You know, add a detached structure because we call that two-family too. Um, it's really meant to sort of go back to the way it had been where. Uh, an accessory dwelling within or as part of under the same sort of. Footprint of a single family could be done by a lot, by right.
We had some strange situations in the past where two dwellings were connected by like a breezeway and a roof.
Yeah.
Um, we don't see that anymore.
Um, well, we could see that, especially in a two-family, people really sort of want to have separate walls. So actually, this is a question for, for an architect. Um, does this language sort of ensure that that kind of thing doesn't happen? If it says it's under one roof?
You're saying one roof structure.
Yeah.
I guess in the lawsuit. Separate process, I mean, different structure, I mean, I don't know.
And what do you think when you read that?
I read it's.
But under one, under one roof, right? Not like.
Not like under two roofs connected by a.
I was connecting them, that's one roof, right?
Right, right. I meant more like. Roof, then you drop down and you have a breezeway and then another structure. That wouldn't be under one roof, right?
I don't know. I mean, we talked about, can you put a breezeway and just make it by the letter of the law, one roof?
But it's, but when you call that three roofs.
There's no laws in architecture. Define the zoning as a definition, if, if you want to not allow that, I guess. I guess my question is, do you not want to allow that? I don't know.
Well, I mean, that's a.
I guess the issue is, it doesn't, one of them trigger a review and one doesn't.
Well, the issue is um, there was a concern when um. About whether someone might use the zero lot line because you're closer to this, the side lot on one side of the property. To add multiple buildings on the parcel. And so. The idea is to limit it to a single family. But um.
Hundred and twenty foot single. House where you have two fifty foot with a twenty foot breezeway, like.
Yeah.
Like, why would you want to? I don't know why people would want to do that in this climate, honestly, but like. They wanted to, like, why is that? Is it more of a nuisance or something to their neighbor? Not particularly.
Yeah, I I can think of a couple of examples around town where that has happened, but it certainly seems that, I guess they blend in most.
I mean, I guess, I mean, it's, I guess it would be comparable to sort of the rambling farmhouse anyway, you know, that keeps, you keep adding on and adding on. Um.
Wouldn't it be a duplex that was a single structure and then they took the. Entryway to the, and then demolished the entry, made it an open breezeway, which suddenly became illegal, and then it seems kind of fine.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. But isn't there a difference in um? You have two family as detached versus detached, two family as single dwelling, doesn't it come to us?
Yes.
Different.
Yes, true. If it's detached, it would have to come. Yeah, no, no, no.
I guess if it's zero law, I don't want that's either way.
Zero lot lines are allowed by right, but if you're doing, but, but if you wanted to do two. Units. I mean, I guess this would say, okay, if you want to do detached units. As your accessory dwelling, dwelling. It's not allowed. That's what this would say. Unless you. Because it's not under one roof.
Yeah, unless you just put a big roof that connect to the two structures together.
Right.
Which is.
And then you wouldn't come back to planning board anyway.
So you'd have something that looked like two houses with a tunnel between them.
Yeah.
A walkway between them. And do, do. Do we have a problem with that?
Well, it's more like if you have a house that is informing. And it nobody's the normal lot line. But then you're gonna add. Second family as a attached addition. But that one's going to put or reduce. Now. That's a, that's a, that's a. Why? Just like where the house happens to be, the only place to build it and. Or into the lot line inside.
Well, don't forget, you can't do zero or reduce lot line unless you own both sides of that side lot line. Anyway. Yeah. So then I suppose in that case, it doesn't matter because if you're, you're, you're setting it up for that and you've. Um, you own both sides. And it's not detached anyway. Um, I mean, I guess the under single roof structure would mean that you couldn't do it. An accessory, a detached accessory dwelling, dwelling using zero lot line. So it seems pretty.
Seems like it's easier to do a like a one over one. I'm not so two foot, like a.
Mm hmm.
Sorry, flats. I don't know.
Yeah. Right. And it would still meet that. Okay. So I suppose we've gone around in a circle.
No, we're two partners right now, but I don't really know like about the civil structure. If it's fine.
Yep. Okay. Um.
Food truck, can you park your food truck in the.
That's what you could do with the reason.
Um, and I'm sorry, we closed the public hearing earlier, but this is a separate public hearing. Okay. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to come forward and speak to this two-family uh, duplex situation? Or do we have anybody in the?
I don't see any.
Zoom or any chats? Okay. Hearing none, seeing none, uh, is there motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
Woo hoo. Most of them made a second of close the public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, all those opposed? Unanimous. All right, is there a motion about recommending twenty-three point two four seven? To clarify reduced lot line. Uses.
Do it.
Thank you.
I will move to recommend. Twenty-three point two four seven. Ordinance to clarify reduced lot line. Uses allowed by right.
Very good. Is there a second? Thank you, Stacy. Any discussion? We beat this one up. Okay, all those in favor? Aye. And no opposed, unanimous again, Carolyn.
So the only thing that other that I have.
And, and just in terms of the ones that were not recommended, they're not zoning ordinances, but you did attach them about the. The scooters and we're changing the language to make sure it. Reflects Florence Village, discuss it, Florence Village Center. I don't know if anybody has any questions about those that they want to raise. A lot of it is just language around the Florence Village District. Okay. So now we're moving down to. Our other category.
So I had on there in the committee assignments, um. Are you typically do that in the spring? Um, and so I, what I didn't, what I forgot to send you was the subcommittee list, so I'm just gonna pull it up here. Um. Give me a second. Oh, boy.
I brought this up with Carolyn just because we've had uh, some changes in our membership um. And uh, David had brought up uh. His, his participation in the committee that he's on or the, he's like out, outside commitments.
Okay. So. As uh, so we did this. January twenty twenty-two. Um, so we have. Four. Committees, but there's also housing partnership that could have a slot. Um. So we have Capital Improvements Committee, Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, Tech Review. Um, Community Preservation. And then. Um, periodically, there are other projects that you might um, just decide to. Review or participate in as a whole. And then there's Housing Partnership, which um. I, for the last several years, um, the board has decided not to have a representative to go regularly to those meetings, but just to have. Sort of staff liaison between the two committees. So Keith. Um, Benoit in our office is the staff um, person that um. That um. Runs or helps facilitate the Housing Partnership um, committee. Um. So those are the sort of five categories. So um, capital improvements just meets. Basically, September to November, so they're done for this year. Um. And their members are appointed um. Um, by the mayor officially. So Melissa, you were on that, right?
And I'll, I'll stay on that.
Okay.
Somebody else isn't dying to do it.
Isn't there a meeting coming up on Zoom? Zoom about the CIP?
Yeah, so now it's gone on, like now it's going through its process, so.
Right, so.
I don't know about that meeting.
No, I think, so the committee is formed to sort of evaluate the projects and then send the recommendations along.
Right, right. We ranked everything.
Yeah.
And gave our recommendations to the mayor.
So now the public or the, the department head are starting that process again for the next fiscal year.
Um, that won't start again till next year. So we're still in it for, so moving forward to the, through the council process and then it starts again in the fall.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks, Melissa. Yeah, it's great.
Yeah, it was interesting.
Yeah.
So I'll keep doing that.
Um. Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, David is a member. Wayne is the alternate. Was the alternate. Um, so that one is definitely open. The alternate position.
So are you the, are you the alternate, right?
Um, yeah.
What's up?
I'd be happy to relieve you.
Well, before you give away the alternate, I, I've had a lot of trouble uh, getting to the meetings. I mean, there's Zoom meetings, they're not, they're every. Other month, maybe something like that. I've just said, I've been so busy, I have not, I've missed a couple and. They also almost always. Conflict with this meeting. So I usually end up. They're usually like five.
Set on two, I think.
Maybe they're like at six PM or something, something like that.
So I, I mean. Oh, so towns and. Yeah, so all towns in the Pioneer Valley region, um, they center wrap from the planning there. Planning boards. And then um. And then usually staff officials are alternates or sometimes sit in, so. Um, so I think it would probably make sense for me to be the alternate again and have a board member there, since it's really, and then you're just. Well, David can explain as well, but they um, you know, there are different issues on the agendas for each month.
There's a lot of informational things they bring people in to talk about. Statewide issues or like, I mean, it's like every region of the state has a planning and it's basically like when they give the money out, like these are the organizations that figure it all out, the math out and, and most of it are passed through, they don't. But like. Like with the federal money that came through like this, the legislature and the governor both sent people to talk about how their different visions of giving out the money or. Um, and then there's also governance thing, the, the, the. The board members from the different towns technically. Vote on like approving the budget, I think even of, of the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. And there's a lot of like inside. Like, how much soap are we gonna buy for the bathroom? These kind of stuff too. I mean, that's not most of it, but, but most of it is. But there's interesting stuff and, and I think um, it's important for Northampton because I think. Um. There are huge range of different issues from different towns, you can imagine. Um. And um, some of the things happening in Northampton. Um, we're sort of in some ways like ten years. Into the future with some of the decisions that other towns are making, so I think it's important. But I just have time.
A, a big thing I think is that tipped the Transportation Improvement. Plan where they. Put out five years what the priorities. Put out five years, what the priorities are in the region and Northampton always has something in that basket, you know, that we were.
Yeah, that's going on right now. Yeah.
Yeah. Are you interested, Stacy? Great. Thank you very much.
I will send your name to them.
And it's a relatively new, uh, executive director, right? Two years now or?
Yeah, I think two years.
Yeah, she came from Colorado. Haven't met her yet.
Yeah, just.
Yeah.
Okay. So then we also have this, uh, technical review committee. So we can have one person come to that. That's sort of, that's the preliminary. Sort of staff review of projects that might come forward, but they've been, they've been developed enough to have a concept. And it's a way to. Get fire. Building. Issues about economic development, housing, planning, zoning, conservation commission. Sort of. All, um, and stormwater and utilities. Sort of all those, um, elements. Um, in the room at once for the applicants to understand what's going to be expected of them when they apply to try to make sure that we. Don't have. There aren't unexpected things that they haven't addressed. I mean, that doesn't always work, but we try to do that to. Um, make sure those things get taken care of. These are for bigger projects. So the, the group meets as needed, um. And it's the third Tuesday and it's a morning meeting. If we have two projects, we start at seven thirty. To eight thirty. So it's just really quick sort of run through the projects. If it's just one, we'll start at eight. Before the workday so that. Folks who. Have other things to do can carry on. So George, uh, Sam had been the primary person and George was the backup. And the reason being that. You know, for some reason someone couldn't make it, it would still be good to have, uh, plenty of our perspective.
Is Sam still planning to do it or does he want to step down?
I don't know. I haven't had a conversation. He did.
He did. Yeah.
Yes.
So. You must still want to do. That's a hint. They'll want to do it then.
And he didn't say, I can't do this anymore. Sticking to that.
And I'll stick with it as his, as his sub.
Okay.
I feel like if he hadn't coming against his will, you would have heard about it.
Yeah.
Okay. And we have CPC. How's that going, Jana?
Um, sorry to spring you this on you at this meeting, but, um, I saw it on the agenda. Anyway, I am also having some scheduling difficulties. I've been able to make it. But I'm. I would be happy if somebody else could take over my spot, um, because it's. Getting in the way of some other.
Yeah.
Things that I have going on.
And, and, and explain that one.
CPC is, is the, um, Community Preservation Committee. So we have, uh, Northampton and many communities around the state have passed the CPA. The Community Preservation Act, which allows us to levy a local tax that then, um, we use the funds to. Make awards for projects in affordable housing. Ooh, I'm gonna forget. Thank you. Thank you. Yes, those. Um, so there's two award cycles, one in the fall, one in the spring. Um, where applicants, you know, submit applications, we send back. Questions, we hear from them, we meet with the public and then we make recommendations and the city council officially, um, awards the funds. Occasionally there are summer meetings if there's small or, um. Kind of urgent applications, time sensitive applications, but mostly it's kind of September to November, December, and then February to. May and it's, uh. Second and fourth Wednesday. Kind of depends how many applications there are, how long the process takes.
So the fall one kind of runs in the same period as, as the. The one I'm on. I, I'd be interested in. Help it out. I just, it's, I, I, it seems like the fall ones may conflict.
Yeah.
Cause we had a, we had a ton of meetings. Inside of a month.
Yeah, yeah, it gets pretty intense.
And, uh, this can be pretty intense too with reading applications and going on site visits and then.
Yeah.
David and I both had the opportunity to serve on it.
Yeah.
It's good because you're always making people happy pretty much.
Yeah, it's, and it's a good, good group, very engaged membership. There's, it's a combination of. Uh, reps from other committees, elected members and appointed members, I think. So it's kind of an interesting makeup as a body and everybody's really. Um, engaged. So there's lots of robust discussion, which is wonderful and also. Takes up a fair amount of time. So.
Is it mostly Zoom meetings still or?
We're all, we've been on Zoom. So I've been, this is my second year doing it and it's been on Zoom the whole time and they seem. Happy about that. So I suspect that that will continue for that group as long as it's. Allowed is my sense right now.
I can try to take it. I don't know that I have time, but. I can just see how it goes.
You're in the middle of the cycle.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'll finish this cycle. So it would be, um. And I could continue through the summer as well. It's really starting in the fall that, um, when my work pick back, picks back up again, that's when I'd like to switch out. So.
So, yeah, there are two rounds each year and sometimes they're heavier or lighter, um, depending on, you know, what projects are being proposed and.
My summer's super busy, but. Maybe I'm ramping down in the fall a little bit.
Yeah, I can continue through the summer and usually there's, I mean, if the summer there's anything, it's like one meeting. It's pretty quiet. So.
If someone's having an emergency.
Yeah.
Well, and that sounds great, Chris. Let's see how you're doing that in the fall. If it doesn't work out. You know, I could offer to take over the CIP. So you could do the CPC and then we'll have the ZBA or the FBI.
Okay. You gotta like.
What a plan. Then the last committee was Affordable Housing.
Right.
So, and, and again, I put a little bug in, um, Alan Burson, some of you remember, he was on the, um, the planning board. For a while with us and he was the rep, the last rep to the Affordable Housing Group, but, um.
Wasn't he also CPC? Hmm, I thought I took over his.
Oh, he might have dropped a Housing Partnership to go to CPC.
No, and then I took over the CPC. I think you took over for me.
Have we had, uh, I have no remember ever having an update from any of their meetings though in these.
No.
Have we ever had one? And did they have meetings? Like, how often do they meet?
So they've been working a lot on recently on, on different kind of legislation. So. With though that they oversaw a process to, um, evaluate. Burdens to or barriers to housing through MPVPC did this report that came up with a bunch of recommendations to address. Housing in Northampton. And so they've been, um. Taking those recommendations and seeing if they can, you know, uh, push them forward. So one of the recommendations was about this. Um, broker fee, um, idea that, um. That, um, that should be, there should be a local petition, home rule petition to, um, not allow brokerage fees for rentals. They're working on, they also are interested in supporting another. Potential mechanism for. Funding affordable housing. So that, that's sort of what they've been working on recently.
This came up on CPC a number of times too, where. They were doing a lot of work, but we never really heard what they were doing. And so there was talk about, should we send somebody or have them come to CPC and report and, you know? Cause it's kind of like this semi. Public private group of, I mean, it's an interesting, it's, it's very interesting. A lot of people know a lot.
They meet once, um, they meet. Um. Again. Um, they meet on Mondays. Is that right? Um, Nathan, the third Monday? Yeah, no, no, the, um, Housing Partnership. It is a Monday. It's second or third Monday. Yeah.
Well, I was on it quite a while ago back in, uh, odds. That we call two thousand, like two thousand and four. Um, and it was pretty, pretty active then, um, and I, and I found it really helpful and I think they found it helpful to have. Somebody from the planning board talk about some of the permitting process and affordable housing and, and how that works from the planning board's perspective. So. You know, there, I think there is a, a place there for good kind of cross communication.
Yeah. And I think it would be good. Uh, I think it's good to also. I think there could be a lot more advocacy for housing, just in general, not just affordable housing. And so to the extent that they sort of. Really understand, um, more than just the, you know, question about affordable housing. Um, and participate in that conversation, it would be, um, type beneficial for both. Committees. Um, there were a couple of members came, or at least the chair came for Valley CDC's project.
Yep.
Um. But, you know, we think it probably makes sense to do more of that, not just. The habitats or Valley CCN projects.
Just adding, it's Monday. And first, first Monday of the month.
Oh, the first, one of the second first, one of the Mondays.
So I, I'd be happy to do that unless you wanted to do it and I could take over the CIP. But I'm.
It doesn't matter to me.
Okay, well, I, so. If the chair can volunteer to do that.
Okay, so I'll put you in for Housing Partnership, George.
Sure.
Right. I'll get your, I'll link you with deep so that you can get on the.
Good.
You know. Right.
Well, thanks, everybody. We'll meet again in a year and right, we, we haven't done a good job of putting like report backs, like for the PVPC little agenda items where. David can tell us what they talked about or, you know, uh, often the CPC, we get to read about that in the local paper or hear about it. Some of the bigger projects, um, but. Yeah, but CIP, we don't know what's going on. So. You can. Give us a lesson next time. Thanks, Carolyn. Um, and then we have January minutes. The only one missing that day with Jenna and Sam weren't available that day. Um, it was just a, a, a discuss and there was no permit. There was a discussion on, uh. Affordable housing.
Inclusionary zoning.
Yeah, yep. So everybody had a chance to look at that. I scanned them quickly. I didn't see any typos, any errors. So most of them approve those minutes.
I moved to approve the minutes.
Thank you.
A second.
All right. Most of them made it seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor approving the minute of January, was it the eighth?
Twenty six.
Twenty six. That was my. All right, all right. Well done, unanimous, January twenty six. Okay, and we have one A and R. At, uh, the thirty one thirty three.
So, um. Subdivision approval not required comes to you when a new subdivision is not being. Created, but there either is a new lot being created that has fronted legal frontage on the street. Or if there's land swaps, then, um. It has to come through the A and R process because, uh, required advice. That you, so in this case, um. There's this, uh, this parcel here is comprised actually of two. Lot or this lot is comprised of two tracks. And then there's this other parcel here. So there's just a little. Uh, land swap between, um, you know, a triangle from here going this triangle from there to go there. Um, to accommodate, you know, the driveway that's sort of, um. This used to be, well, still is all in common ownership, the three parcels. So at the time that these were built, the owner didn't really care what the driveway was, just kind of hit the driveway, house and a lot. Sort of right down the middle. So that's sort of the, that's the only reason for these two small. triangular pieces there. So this, this one goes to there, this one goes to there.
Areas.
One hundred sixty feet versus.
And which lot's getting bigger after this swap?
Looks like. We're gonna quiz you on this next month.
Well. This lot is getting more land.
Yeah, yeah.
But I wouldn't say it's getting bigger.
Oh, okay.
I mean, I guess it's getting bigger by fifteen feet, but this is still the bigger lot.
Right.
So.
But when it's getting more area and, and one's getting.
All is only to determine whether or not there's a subdivision. So that.
And then just out of curiosity, which is not related at all to A and Rs. But if a parcel changes its shape. And it's in a zoning district. Does the zoning district continue to stay within the shape of the new parcel? Or does the zoning district follow a different? Line?
The zoning district is completely separate from lot lines.
Okay.
So you can chop up all your lot lines you want. Doning comes down and overlays on top of it and stays and the lines can switch any which way in between. At any time.
There's many parcels that are in multiples zoning districts.
Yeah, there's.
And the part of the parcel that's in the zoning district, that's the zoning that governs for that part of the parcel. Or is it a weighted average?
There are rules that. Um, go just to that, um, and it depends. So it. Um, it's where the pri, the, the uses governed are those that are where most of the land sits.
It's the majority of the.
Yes. And then there's different, slightly different. Also, there's also split zones that cross municipal boundaries, right? So West Hampton, East Hampton, completely different zoning codes. So when you cross the line, you go into a different zoning district, but it's the same lot. But your land in West Hampton, um, that side is governed by West Hampton. The land, the portion of the property you own in Northampton. Is, um, for whatever's going on in that piece is governed by Northampton. But when the total, if you're looking at sort of build out of the total, it's wherever most of the land lies, um.
For the allowed uses.
Exactly.
But then the setbacks are based on the zone.
Where that piece is.
Where the land itself is. So you can have a rear setback that jogs when it crosses the zoning line.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, it has nothing to do with the zoning class, um, zoning district boundaries.
Um, and so let me just clarify, cause our two people who spoke at the public comment were certainly speaking about this larger. Um, picture. So, but this isn't a public hearing around A and Rs.
It's an administrative review. Your jurisdiction is only limited to looking at whether a parcel has frontage, if in the case you're creating a new lot. Um, or if, uh, and. Um, whether this would constitute a subdivision. You can't look at zoning. You can't look at anything else.
And this.
It doesn't matter what any use is now on the property or in the future, as long, I mean, the only thing that can, that I can do. Or you could do. When you see an A and R that comes in, that might create a line that would create a non-conforming structure. You can mark the plan. Or you can write whatever you want on the plan. But you can't deny, you can't say that this is a subdivision and therefore you're not going to sign the plan. But you can write notes all that you want on the plan and say. This building is now non-conforming. And that will cause a problem for the person who sort of be wants to draw a lot line, let's say, right down the middle of the house. Um, that's going to create a legal non-conformity and so you can flag it. But you can't. And you can't refuse. To sign the A and R plan if it meets the standards and the subdivision rules for A and R.
What you're showing us there is the existing lot for metrics before it was knocked down. Is that the metrics building there?
Yes. Yeah. And the other thing is you don't really, they don't, they don't have to show the buildings on the property either for now.
Other questions?
I move to endorse the A and R on Chapel Street.
Most of them made. Sir, second? Second by Melissa. All right. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of endorsing the A and R on Chapel Street? Anonymous. Okay. Thank you. Thanks for coming tonight. That about wraps up our business. That about wraps up our business. On March eighth. Want to thank everybody out there in Zoom joining us. Still away. And.
Still early.
It's a record.
So I adjourn.
Move, we adjourn.
Motion second. Motion is made to adjourn at eight fifteen.
And I just, I'm sorry, I didn't see that. There was a couple of comments that came in. Just a question. I just want to acknowledge they came in.
Is the proposal going to only govern the changes to existing structures or the new structure as well? There's no news. So we talked about that. There's no new structure. You're not looking at any new structure. And if the builder doesn't want the swap and the neighbors object, why does the planning board want to approve?
Then it'd be your V swap.
So application come in, you, you're actually obligated by the law to respond within twenty one days.
So unless the applicant withdraws an application, you guys.
The applicant doesn't have to file this A and R, right?
They have to record it.
They don't have to record it. So they can do what they want with it. They could tear it up if they want.
Right. But you have to legally respond within twenty one days or de facto becomes.
To be clear, it's not a PVURB swap.
No, it's not. Nope.
It's purely a lot lines. Well,
It's a lot line swap.
That theoretically would be a change of ownership, except it's the same owner here. So, okay.
There's no swap. There's no change. Sorry about that. I just didn't see.
No, that's, that's okay. That's the, the little downside to running these hybrid meetings is we've, we're kind of focused here on the real people and we.
I don't think we technically take comments on A and Rs anyway. So very good of you to do that.
But we're trying to be transparent for our residents. So.
We didn't vote on the adjourning anyway, so it didn't help.
Still a part of our.
It's, no, we got it right in there. So.
Um, we'll amend that motion to adjourn to eight seventeen.
Objection, objection.
Jana.
That is, all those in favor.
David, motion.
All right, second opposed.
Being a little weird.
Well, do it one again. All those in favor?
Yeah.
All right. They oppose unanimously. Okay, good night, everyone.